Okay.
I'll leave that.
You will?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Unless I can think of any reason to address my opinion on going through it again.
Short afternoon session, it's just me.
You're gonna be on the schedule next week. You'll be on the schedule.
Yes. Have we gone in?
Last week.
Huh?
Last week.
Last week? Oh, last week there.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm feeling alright.
It is 1:35. We will call this meeting back to order or back from the sess. 1:30, we have temporary interim DES coordinator, job description and salary. We addressed this last week, Mike, but it was on the agenda for today and so it was ongoing business because it had been on the agenda previously. So, we'll just repeat the motion and get it on the record so that there's no mistaking what took place and where we're at. I have an MOU here, same one as, and the job description. There you go Franklin. And there's a resume here too. If you'd like that, I'd be willing to have you take your coffee. All right. And again, this is just housekeeping.
Do you have any questions for me, commissioners?
Do you have any questions Franklin?
No, I think you, everything we're listening to, MOU there. At this point, I don't believe so. I think everything looks pretty good.
All right.
You have any comments back?
Mike, would you like to make any kind of statement? You certainly are not obligated to, but if you'd like to, we're all leaders.
Uh, no, I think, no, I put the job description together and worked on that and mailed it to the commissioners about a week ago, I think it was. And I think that kind of describes the job, their status, talks about the temporary position, interim position based upon those that you were thinking in that original letter. I think it kind of covers everything that is expected of a person in that position. Looking forward to it and do my best. Thank you for considering me temporary position.
Absolutely. So Franklin, what's that you want to ask more questions?
Thank you. No, I don't make a question.
Okay. Again, for housekeeping, you should go ahead and have another vote in a second just to make sure that it's all super clean.
I'd like to do that. Because most, we've already done that, lunch.
Yep.
Okay, good. I guess we'll do it again then. Make a motion that we hire Mike Conkey as the interim DES coordinator. I won't put any more than that, that's the motion.
Right, I'm gonna take this so we can sign it. Last week, we did discuss and agreed on the $20 per hour.
Oh, okay.
And of course, for the public, that needs split accounting, we pay half and then the other half is waived by the state.
That's Homeland Security, EMPJ, emergency, national performance grant, which is due this Friday.
Thank you.
I have it ready to submit.
You got it all ready?
I do, I have it all ready.
So I will second the motion. It's my move and seconded by your Mike Conkey as the interim temporary DES coordinator. And with the friendly amendment, I'll add at $20 per hour. All those, if that is all right with you?
Right.
All right? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
I'd like to talk a little bit about this job.
Absolutely. We could have you step forward and then you can sign and then share anything you would like.
Sure.
Thank you.
If you know, I've been participating on the Tri-County Fire Safety Working Group for a couple years now. And we're putting together a fuel hazard map. I also, an incident man came and we go into a lot of these fires, like for instance, we just came back from Madison County. And in preparation for that fire, we did an evacuation plan with local government, the county commissioners, the county sheriff and the fire chief. And we went in there, the fire department went in there and just in case the fire came off the mountain, which is in the dryupless and came down to the east, we've had to evacuate those areas there. What we do in Tri-County Fire is try and do the same thing for the three counties, that's Broadwater, Jefferson and Lewis and Clark County. And we've put together a fuel hazard map. And what we like to do is get permission from the commissioners to take the GPS and rural address and stuff from Nicole Brown's computer and put this on the map. And that'll give us a pretty good idea of pre-planning, if, you know, if there's a fire or something, what the risk is to the same firefighters and law enforcement in those areas, as well as a document for the, well, the public to take a look at. I think it's something enhanceable, exactly. And I have drafted a letter there that the Lewis and Clark County's gonna do this for us, if there aren't some charges, anything. They have that stuff, they've been doing it. But they have to get permission from our county, your information, your documents, your GPS stuff, share that with, we'll put it on the maps and then we'll get copies of the maps for our county. It'll, you know, give them the fire department, stuff like that. Do you have any questions briefly? You don't have to consider it today, here's the original letter if you're interested.
I think it's a great idea. And we can put it on the agenda for next week and then have Nicole do as well.
Sure. Yeah, have her come in.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right.
Not a big deal.
Just getting ready for the next fire, maybe next year. I think we're out of the woods for the year.
Thank goodness.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
I hope you're out of the job and you don't have anything to do.
Well, the thing to realize is you're not just the ES coordinator for fire. It would be flood, which, of course, we had a couple years ago, earthquake, hazard spill with railroad, with any of the trucking around here. I'm sure there's a myriad of other emergencies that I'm just not even thinking of. So far more than just fire.
That's true.
Yes, Trudy, question for Mr. Conkey. Will you be holding the emergency planning meetings again on a monthly basis?
Yes, I think I sent an email out to you today.
Okay.
Those are commissioners of a newspaper article, September is National Preparedness Month.
I got that, yes.
And from the bottom of that article, there was a next, not next Thursday, the 19th of September at 3:00 PM, 3rd Thursday of the month, at the Forest Service Building.
Okay.
We're having the LEPC meeting. And I'll get out on agenda here.
Okay.
Be sure, all public's welcome to attend most.
Thank you.
Good night.
Any other questions?
At the same time, at 1:30?
It would be 3 o'clock.
What was it, 3?
3 o'clock on the 3rd Thursday.
Are those ones that used to be, oh, maybe they always were 3?
I think they're 3, we used to have them at 5:10. And a lot of that, people didn't want to come in and have to work. So that's fine. It's whatever the group wants with general consensus. There's been some talk of changing a date or the week to the 2nd from the 3rd, but that's up to the group consensus on, here it's served.
All right, any other questions Franklin? All right. Thank you very much again.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
And we've got you all set.
Cool.
So just one more quick piece of mail Franklin, I just need your signature on this. It is for ink cartridges for the recording pen and this is again, just a check and balance as I signed for the commissioners. We just need another commissioner to initial. And the agenda states that we won't have our next appointment until 2:15, which is quite a lengthy time from now. I guess it's just half an hour. I'm wondering, Ann, if it would be okay with you to run down and ask Debbie to maybe just put an intercom message out to, that will start at 11, or excuse me, at 1:45 with the department heads meeting?
Thank you.
Trudy, when you asked if there were any revisions, I should have caught that and let you know that was moved up. We had an appointment that was canceled in between there.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we have the whole. So we'll just start that early as these issues and times are subject to change. Anything more that you want to bring forth Franklin while we wait?
No. You're on the ground running, I guess. Same thing.
I might ask you just.
Yes?
Toston Irrigation has a meeting on the 12th, this Thursday, 7 o'clock. And I, just before I came in there, I had a phone call from the Highway Department, they're gonna be present at that meeting to visit with the commissioner, water commissioners. And the landowners are gonna be affected by that, Toston South. Anybody that's interested could attend that and they'll talk about the highway project they're gonna work on. South of Toston, I think they're gonna start there about mile marker 89, where the 12 bands are. And they're gonna go south and tie into the little four lane passing lane clear down nearby, a Hosfield lane, I think, yes. But they're gonna have a couple engineers there and hydrologists and a couple right away meeting to talk to the water commissioners. And then the landowners live in that area. Gonna bring their maps and designs and all that stuff.
Excellent. Just to let you know, I'll be out of town at a conference Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That would be a good one to attend.
I'll be there.
Now Franklin, landowner, commissioner there, gap commissioner here.
We had a working group meeting on that particular project about two weeks ago and it was a long, how? Thanks, Ann.
When are, how are they scheduled to start construction?
Well, it's, it's supposed to have been this winter, but they're not gonna let the contract till January, so it'll be spring. Well, maybe early spring, it depends how, how the winter is and what goes or, and what they're gonna do first. I think there's a lot of work they can do where they have to get in, well, they gotta get the rightaways done by then. But I mean, fencing and if they have to do anything on that Toston Irrigation line. Ractors on the ground line, right on the borderline of where the spill's gonna be. And so they'll, they'll know more about it at the performance of this meeting. A lot of it, I don't think they'll have to touch up as far as Toston Irrigation, other than a little mountain road there. Have you seen that rightaway guy back around there again? I haven't, I talked to him all time.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna come to that meet. There'll be two of them there at that meet, right away.
Oh, is he?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Taylor?
Yes, and his supervisor, she'll be there also. She's the one that called me.
Oh. 'Cause yeah, first layer, they're gonna be there right after the 5th of August, that week.
I think they're waiting for us to cut our, third cutting before they put the stakes out of people's property so they don't get bailed. Like they did last spring.
Yeah.
They also would like some people to attend. And if they're busy bailing, they won't be able to attend. Yep.
Well, they staked up our muddy land when you saw that.
I saw that, yeah. Go on, a job, someone calls, I'm staked.
Right, and I think, I thought I saw a little mountain, I think they staked too. I think they staked those three roads.
Just changing the subject really quick. The Career Training Institute, which is called CTI, they're on Helena, they will actually send people to work for different businesses, specifically the county, for this conversation, cost the county nothing. And what we do is we give them some on-the-job training, some work skills. They have someone and I wanna, I'm going to bring it up at the next agenda, for us to bring somebody in and kind of let them work for us in filing and assist Debbie Tammy and also Doug's office. So just a heads up, it costs the county nothing and it trains a local with some good, good job skills they can take to the workplace. We have some good, strong history and CTI employees from the past who become really good employees.
Meeting's gonna continue to be held here?
Yes. Give it a few more minutes, I'll imagine we'll have to, what do you have? We did have a few this morning though, so it might be that's, that's all that's happening.
Pretty good. She said, "I'll see you after lunch." She'll be here.
We're just gonna give it a few more minutes since we're early. We had a cancellation in the agenda, so we had a 1:30 appointment, which took 10 minutes, and then we have a 2:15. So we're just going to shift our 2:15. If you don't, you're more than welcome to.
I don't have a phone.
If you want to run downstairs, you could do that. There.
Yeah, I know. Earlier, she said, "I'll see you at, see you this afternoon up here," so I'm sure she's coming.
Yep.
There's a phone across the hall in my office.
And I just told Mike, he was on the line. Oh, God, Mike?
Mike Conkey's calling right now.
I got her speed dial.
I think she's out of the call.
She should be back by Wednesday, I think.
Yeah.
Which could happen at 10 to 2 or 2:15. That's the hard thing. Of course, any one of us, say I'm one of, any one of you could have an emergency.
Hey, are you busy? Okay. Amendment chair?
Yes, sir.
County attorney and I have a hearing at 2.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners are having a meeting.
You know, I think I'll just start again for you two and if you can come back, great. If not, that's fine. This is just because we haven't had a department meeting in a really long time. This is just to answer any questions you guys might have about the budget. We haven't got very far as far as the building mills, which on every single one of us here at this point, except for Dana, we're working on doing the building mills. What we're looking at this year is the mills first. What are the mills, what do they work and base at the budgeting parameters per department? What we have found is that several departments actually manage so well that they have left over money. In the past, it was usually lucid instead of doing that. What we're looking at is putting that money into a capital improvement plan or an assessment and asset account. It's not a lot, you know, but it'll help. You two specifically, since you're leaving at 2:00 or in the general fund, so you won't have quite that, that ability. But do you guys have any questions? I'm going through this really fast, but you've been through the budget before.
I guess, I'm not sure if I misunderstood what you just said, but my department had requested that whatever was remaining from last year's budget be put in the CIP. Are we going to be able to have that money? Okay.
Yep. So what I was looking for from you guys is a kind of just a discussion. It's in the agenda, it's just a discussion. Any questions you guys have on the agenda, budgets, the new process this year, how it's looking, whatever, we're open for you guys to ask any questions. And if you want me to back up and give you more history, I'm trying to rush for our two at the 2 o'clock. At this point, I see absolutely no reason for cuts. Looking like a really strong budget year. We will have to do some shuffling, but that's vastly different than cuts. And the County Compensation Board, Val, voted for elected officials to give 45 cents additional per hour. And if we can, we'd like us to cover the $64 additional in health insurance that was imposed in April. I don't see in first glance a problem with the 45 cents per hour, we can afford that. We might not be able to do the 64, but we'll certainly be looking at it. And what the County Compensation Board decided is really just for elected officials, but the commission has always practiced that what we get, we pass on to all employees. So.
That's good.
Yes. And that is essentially the 2.1 COLA, based on the average of everyone's salaries and take, just taking the middle guys' sense of what that would be. Dana?
When can we, you know, as far as me, just kind of count on seeing our exact numbers?
Today, for you. Yeah, yours, yours is set by the state.
Yeah.
And you can actually get yours from Debbie.
Okay.
And it's pretty well set. There's really nothing we can do with it, not that we'd want to. And she can also discuss your CIP.
Okay.
At the same time, or, you know, either one of us can after the meeting, if that is convenient for you.
Right.
You and Brian sit a little bit differently than the rest of us.
That's good.
Mike?
Are we gonna individually go over budgets in the next couple of weeks for?
If you want, yep. If you feel good.
Why did you know, I didn't know if you were doing that or if we'd already gone through it and what we've already discussed.
It's easier for those who are not in the general fund as you are, but Debbie is gonna divide out the general fund budget so that we have a little bit more detail to look at. But the general fund is looking really strong this year and that's why I say I don't see any reason for cuts. So yeah, we can certainly sit down with anyone who wants to discuss their budget. And you can choose who you sit down with. Debbie, Debbie, we do have working on an awful lot like right now, so if you could maybe talk to one of us, that would be better for her and with her work on payroll, she's starting today, and HR, which she did last Friday, and then the budget on top of that. Yes?
Why is Dana and Brian's budgets different? Are they different?
Brian's is an enterprise fund. He does not take any tax dollars at all, it's all fees for service. Dana's is actually a separate fund, and Dana, you may be able to help with the terminology here, but his mills are separately determined at the state level. We don't have any, any control over that. And so actually, the state comes back and says, "This is your road budget, this is your road mills that will go to that budget." And really Dana and the state have the most control, Dana with managing his account and the state with setting the mill values and it's just a matter of calculations.
Does that have something to do with like maybe highway taxes that we pay or anything else that?
Do you know any of those answers, Dana?
I don't really know. I do know that there's very little, as you say, road tax. You know, everybody pays road tax, but it's, you know, it's very minimal. And our road tax goes into my budget, you know, but, but that doesn't make up nothing. I mean, it's very minimal. The rest of it, you know, Natalie's always explained it to me as, as just like you did, it's set by the state, the mills, the amount, mill amount is set by the state, the amount of mills is set by the state. And that's basically all I know about it and, you know, so, that works out kind of good for me, I guess.
Thank you. Gary?
So do the commissioners, if their monies were already determined, who determines their, how they divide it up as far as salary or machinery or whatever? You guys do that or the department heads do that?
Department head, yep.
They decide their own salary?
No. Dana could come and advocate for his employees with us regarding salary, but he's really in the same bucket as the rest of us. Everybody, especially with the need-to clause, everybody gets the same raise, you don't do merit pay. So yeah, he can't, he can determine salary for another employee if he has the money and put that into his salary bucket, but he can't determine that his guys are each gonna get another dollar per hour. That has to be done as accounting entity and of course, that's come through the commission for approval. Carla?
I have a question, sort of affects overall, and I'm not sure if this is something that was budgeted in Mike's budget or if it's something that's being separately proposed, but are we going to go forward this winter with upgrading this floor of the courthouse? Because there's a appreciable difference now between downstairs and upstairs and I think that was commented on by, we had quite a full house here last week when we had the Diana Lewis hearing. This floor is in pretty desperate need as well of upgrading and I just wondered if you folks have discussed that or?
We haven't really discussed it, I think it was assumed that it was part of the plan to do it step by step. This carpet's over 30 years old, you can see the ripples right here, that's a trip hazard. So if somebody tripped and then wanted to sue the county and they won the suit, guess who pays? That person, all of us taxpayers. So if we decided to work with Mike and put a little bit of money into new carpets, it's actually saving taxpayers from the liability risk that they would be paying out of their own pockets. So it's a responsible decision in that way. We don't want somebody tripping, so it's a responsible decision in that way. And there is a perception of quality when you do see quality carpet that's not 30 years old and rippling and fraying when it comes to coming to a commission meeting or going to trial. That needs to be, that needs to be looked at. One of the deputies said to me that we have, they have a whole different presentation now because of the two new vehicles. That's, that translated with, with that deputy, it's the same thing, we want a nice presentation that says quality, we care about our county. It's, it's a pretty small price to pay for the safety issue as well. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess one way I would point out is, I mean, I do think there is some value in the fact that this is a workplace that those of us who work for the county have to be in every day. And, you know, it's more modern and, and nice next door where the folks are housed in detention than some of the work areas that those of us on this floor are using on a daily basis, so I think that's also a factor.
And we are so lucky to have the expertise, the knowledge, the work ethic that Mike brings. We'd be foolish not to use him to the, to his exhaustion. We foolish not to use him to the, to his exhaustion. Just saying. Any more employees? Cheryl.
Cheryl Campbell. I'm confused about Dana. The state sets his mills and value, but the county pays his salary. I don't understand.
The state sets most of the mills. The only mills that the county sets, that the commissioner set are the floating mills. Those are just those departments I read earlier. All the other departments are either set by the state or grants that help fund some departments. But even the county valuations are set by the state. They determine valuations, mill values, and send them to us. Road is separated and the state doesn't.
So is the state sending him money separate from county tax money?
Just because the state evaluates the county or the road mills doesn't mean the state pays. What it means is they're setting what the valuation is that goes out in the county taxpayers' tax bills. So the county's still paying that. It's just how much a mill is worth for the road department or how much a mill is worth for the floating mills is determined at the state level. But the people who pay it are still the citizens. Does that help?
I guess.
It's all a little confusing.
Any other questions or comments? For the employees, and we'll send out a memo because I know what the time can be, and if more people come at two fifteen, we'll hang out here to be here. But we will send out a memo, and anybody who wants to talk with any of us individually about your budgets, we are more than open to you. I will be gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at a conference, but I don't see any reason why we can't get this done in the next couple of weeks. So we could do one-on-ones next week, and if you're happy with things as you submitted them or as they were submitted before, then at this point, we're just gonna kind of go forward. So. Thanks for coming. And I do wanna start doing that often, I think it's important. So thanks for your patience and management. A crazy year as far as that goes to. All right? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Guess I got quarter two, I wanna get out of here.
Right, yeah. I don't think they're in here, but they will be later on this afternoon.
All right. Two o'clock. Four o'clock, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. We will hang out for just a couple of minutes, but I think what we'll do is just open the floor for public comment, and is there any public comment? Joan.
On the Norrisby's question about the dividing of the streets in Toston, has anything been done on that yet?
Come on in, Scott. Yes, and for that, I'm not sure what question you're asking specifically, but you could address that to Nicole Brown, who's the county planner, or, you know, either Franklin or I. We can get more detail for you depending on what's, you're specifically asking about. We have several citizens come forward, but we have given it to our county planner.
Are you talking about the, from Norrisby on Hill Street or the end?
Yeah.
All I know is Norrisby's were meeting with Nicole trying, and she was trying to get information from the Maple Land Attorney. And that's the last I heard, but that's been, been probably three weeks anyway, maybe a month now.
Yeah.
So we probably should.
Well, if they gotta survey, you know where the survey state is up there in the yard.
Yeah, yeah.
If they can't find a home.
Yeah. Nicole, have we gone all this week, you said?
She'll be back on the sixteenth, so yes. Yep. But that would be the best place to go for some good detailed, up-to-date answers.
Well, it's been two or three months.
I'll get Nicole and see what she's found out.
We addressed just some of the budgeting issues, a few questions. It was really a repeat from this morning, but we're gonna kind of hang out till two fifteen, just because there was the cancellation and it didn't work out the time.
Oh, okay.
So we'll hang out till two fifteen, and then if anybody left, I'll readdress whatever they want.
I just swung in here, I didn't catch the minute, I missed that portion, so I was just gonna see if there was any question you had to give me on that.
Okay.
If you had anything, let me know.
I don't think we'll have any questions for you, but.
Or anything to mention or whatever.
Okay.
If not, I'll let you go back to your.
A regular, respectful.
Yeah.
All right. No, it's up to you. If you wanna hang out for five minutes and see if anyone else comes, you can listen in.
I can come back up.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mike. Any other public comment then? All right. We'll just kind of sit here for about five minutes and see any other employees show up.
At a quarter after six this morning, Franklin saw us put up a barking storm. And I looked out, I saw, I looked out, I don't know. What is Franklin doing here at a quarter after six?
Are we having a budget meeting or not?
We are.
I walked out in my house.
If you are interested.
It's a guy that wanted to know if my hip shop was open, and I thought, oh, your truck.
It may be short. We had some of the budgets that had come a little bit earlier because we had a cancellation.
Just those ones you wanted here or all of them?
Any that could make it.
Well.
So we're gonna hang out till two fifteen for those who couldn't make it earlier than that.
Solid Waste? Yes.
So I guess Franklin, I don't know what your truck looks like.
That'll be done.
'Cause then Earl got up and said, what's that? I thought it was Franklin's truck. No, that's not Franklin's truck. I said that things about you quarter after six this morning.
Should they not put it in the back of that? We can put it wherever you want it. It's just we had time to drop it off today, so we did. Okay, we'll probably.
Yeah.
We'll probably have to pick it up in the morning. That could very well have been. I haven't talked to my driver since he moved earlier. Well, we'll look at it and we'll do what we have to do in the morning. Yeah, we can, we can do what we need to do in the morning, so. I had nothing to do with that. I don't know. But that's, most likely that's why I was putting it in front, if there's a little line. Then your door will open up. You bet.
Sheriff Ludwig's on her way, she won't let me, let you guys go.
Okay.
She had a call she had to take care of, so she's traveling here.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, it is about two fifteen, time for our department heads discussion. Brian and Scott, thanks for coming back. What we did is we just kind of repeated what was discussed this morning and then opened it up for discussion. The bottom line is we might be having more department head meetings.
And what was discussed this morning?
I guess you left, didn't you? I'm sorry.
I wasn't aware of anything happening this morning.
We just had a budget discussion, so I'll bring you up to, and it was just for the public this morning. We did have some employees come. The budget, in, this is a different year, things are being done differently. The budget actually legally has two parts, two different resolutions that are required. The first one is to set the mills, and that sets your department and sets Dana's department, and then it sets the special districts, voted mills for we, some others, mosquito. It also sets the school, the city, and the county overall. Permissive mill levy for health insurance and then floating mills, which is what we have control over as commission. So that was done last week. That's been done, it's, that's the foundation for budget. Now we're into figuring out the floating mills, and that is the departments that receive floating mills and general fund, which is about another dozen or so departments. And what we'll do is we will take the mills and spread those out through those departments. There's a couple that are set, and what we looked at is kind of again going backwards from previous years, taking the mills, the same mills that departments got last year, and there was a one-point-oh-three percent inflation that was added. What we did is we added that, went from a hundred and seven-point-one-eight mills total to a hundred and seven-point-eight-eight mills, not a huge increase. But we took an apartment that had, say, a mill last year, added the one-point-oh-three percent, and then determined that it's about one-point-something mills this year. Also, mills are worth more. We talked about the fact that that doesn't mean taxpayers are paying more in themselves. Population is a huge part of that formula. What it means is new business development, new people, more people are paying in, which means that individuals are actually paying less. And the audit actually shows that there's been a twenty-eight percent decrease in the last ten years, two thousand two to two thousand twelve. Two thousand to two thousand ten, we had a twenty-six percent increase in growth. So you can kind of see the correlation. There's some things that make them a little bit more money, and that is businesses, A, that are taxed on production, there's a go-up a little bit, or down, depending on the year. Home that was worth under fifty, ten years ago and is worth two hundred thousand today is gonna be assessed differently. But the foundation actually goes down for individuals, based on growth. So the mills for that department that had one mill now is getting one-point-something, one-point-oh-one or so. That sets a parameter for a department head. This is how much you have to spend. And so a department head then can look at that and say, okay, I had this much last year, this is what I have this year, these are the parameters I need to stay within, and they submit their budget with that in mind. In past years, it's been more of a Christmas wish list. This is what I want, so I'm gonna throw in everything I can, submit it, and we'll see if I can get it all or if there's gonna be cuts. So by doing it backwards or forwards, backwards to previous years, we are actually going to be working more closely with department heads as allies rather than necessarily during the budget season. The other thing with that, if a department head manages their budget very well, both of you two are in that bucket, that money in previous years would have been made out, put into another bucket, and given to another manager who didn't budget their department quite as well. What we're looking at doing is putting excesses into either a C I P, a capital improvement program, or an asset account. So if you manage your budget well, your department well, then you'll have a little bit of cushion to start the year off with, or to spend on some kind of capital, which might mean printer, truck, what have you.
A building?
Yeah, yeah. So that's, and that's your call as a department head.
So what I spent an hour and a half talking to you this morning about, if I've got the money in my budget to purchase a building?
You still have to work with us, you know, we still have final say, but you've got the money in your budget. So now the argument is not, well, Brian, you don't have the money, so we can't even look at this idea, and there may not be a good one. The argument is now, is the idea a good one, looking down the road five, ten, fifty years from now?
And what about departments that get no mill funding, such as solid waste?
Solid waste that works on an enterprise system, I, nothing's changed. So your budget is pretty much set, and if you wanna get together this afternoon, I'd be happy to go over with you. Looks pretty good.
The issue I have is, the only way our revenue increases is by adding new construction onto that system. I have no way of knowing what is being built in the county. I don't get a report about that from anybody. I get a report from revenue that says, this is how many units of solid waste are charged this year. Is that right? And I don't, I have nothing to compare it to.
There was some talk a couple of years ago about working with Julie and having the, she actually starts getting somebody set up for the tax rules after they apply for a septic system. We're gonna move that forward to when they start construction or work with you to get a canister. Should we, Joan, start that again?
Well, I think it should happen at some point.
Yeah.
Because right now, people can build a house, never pay a dime to solid waste fees. They generate roughly four tons of waste building a house. That's a couple hundred dollars free they're getting.
Can you find another county that's kind of put together a document on that so we can just?
Most other counties run on a pay-as-you-throw basis.
Oh, yeah.
So they get that into the scale house when they go to their landfill or their transfer station.
I wonder if you could work with realtors too to get some kind of report on, I don't know. We should put together some kind of a plan though, so that we can address that a little bit more proactively. Yeah. Cheryl, do you have a question or a comment on that?
Cheryl Campbell, well then, who sets the fees for the amount that you see on your tax bill for the solid waste?
Solid Waste Board recommended to the commission, and I think the commission will then approve it or deny it.
We'd have a public hearing to raise it, but it hasn't been raised in at least.
A number of years.
Last I heard, it was a dozen. Long time.
That, that's just kind of a general, it's like each household gets charged the same bulk part.
It's a hundred and twenty-eight dollars per resident is how it's supposed to be. Whether that's being correctly done, we assume it is, but I know there's a few that have fallen through the cracks through the years.
Yeah.
Commercial properties pay more, you know, like, say, the motel, they pay more than one unit of waste.
Some of the people who start building too contact you about renting a canister.
Some do.
Yeah.
Most do.
Yeah. Yeah. Trudy, so if they don't contact you, how do they get rid of the waste? Where does it go?
It ends up in our canisters and our roll sites for free.
From the?
Contractors.
From their trucks?
From landowners, whoever gave, calls them.
And they're not law?
We work with a few of the contractors in the county where they pay the solid waste fee through their business. That allows them to dump at our transfer site. Then they don't have to weigh every load that comes in. They just assume, you know, they've got five units of waste, they can dump so many times without a cost to be made. That seems to work pretty well.
But it needs to be all more encompassing.
We catch the people that are honest and ask. The ones that don't ask, we don't have any idea what they're doing.
Yeah.
And residents interpret their definition of household waste very broadly. We see a lot of stuff in the canisters that they throw away for their 120 bucks. They probably shouldn't be paying extra for it.
Yeah.
But without man sites, you can't sell it.
And of course, that has an expense attached to it all in its own as well.
We're a very forgiving county.
We've got a little recreation areas too that get hammered certain times of the year.
Brenda, did you, you were here earlier, did you want any more background, or do you have any questions?
I do, a lot of questions.
Okay.
As far as the taxes and assessments this year, as, as we talked last year, with that $140,000 cash balance transfer into detention, that's got to be made out somewhere. I mean, it looks like right here, the increase in taxes from last year to this year is roughly 13,000 into the public safety budget. I had wages that went up because of the arbitration award of 38,000. That right there in itself is a deficit of 25,000, not to include the 140 cash balance transfer. If we keep going the way we are at the end of this budget, let's say I had to spend everything in my budget, which I try to be as thrifty as I can with it. I'm only going to have a cash balance of 28,000.
As far as the 40,000 goes, I agree with you. We should try and put that back in. That was not taken out in that sense of the word. What happened last year is we separated out detention center from the public safety budget, and we took out search and rescue as well, although that's not related to this particular topic. But in doing that, what we did is we looked at the total cash that you had for the public safety, which included the detention center, and divided, divided it almost two-thirds, one-third. The 140 was one-third, and as we were dividing out the detention center, we took half of that, or a third of that cash with it. That was the 140,000. So it wasn't just an arbitrary transfer of the money from law enforcement to detention center. There was a plan with it. Since it was not needed by the detention center, I think it's an easy one that we can look at actually putting back into public safety or law enforcement side. That could also come from the general fund. There is the money there. So that isn't a problem, but that's why it was done. It wasn't just an arbitrary, we're going to take this money from you. There was a plan, because of the plan of dividing detention center from public safety. And of course, we met with Carol Glady on that as well.
Yes, we did. I, I understand that, but, I mean, my concern is for not only this year, I mean, with what happened this last budget. I mean, it's depleting my cash balance each year of almost by half, and then down to 28,000. I don't want to see us run it all the way down either.
No, and we're going to have to address that. We're going to have to work together and find some places that we can work on finding some more mills to try and make you whole. That's, that's going to take quite a bit of work, and it's going to take working together to get that done. But like I said, that 140, I don't see it as an issue. I think right now we could just take it out of the general fund, put it in public safety, so that's done. But there's some other things we can look at, and, and we'll need to look at.
And I'm not quite sure how these figures of 100,000, 515 for intergovernmental and charges for services, the 280,000. I don't know how those will combine, because I don't have any detail to them.
I know you've got your, your budget. We saw it in the budget book, and it had a note on it that it was sent to you in, what, May, May 10th? If I remember correctly?
Well, the only one I got was from you, and it was in June. And it was, I was supposed to meet with Natalie and do the wages and do a few adjustments, which it didn't happen for whatever reason. But that was the only one that I got, was this one from you, and then Debbie gave me one, which was, which she went back in and corrected, because it was showing the carryover of the inter, interfund transfers and grants that we don't have anymore.
Okay, what I have here, Brenda, and I'd be more than happy to make a copy for you, but it's from Natalie, and it is your budget, and it says, please sign a date and return to me with or without changes. Thanks. And it has everything for your budget in it. That would have also the intergovernmental and the charges and services. So I would be more than happy to get you a copy of this, so that you can see it again, and maybe that'll help figure out what those are.
And from what I submitted, I tried to figure out what they are.
Do you want?
Debbie said that the intergovernmental were all the 33s. Well, I went through and added them up, and I couldn't come up with that either. That's why I was wondering if there's something that I'm missing, you know?
So any more questions or comments from department heads first? Okay, Tim, did you have a question?
Yeah, Tim Rabidol, I have a question for Brenda. Is, is your cash reserves intact for this coming fiscal year?
I don't know what the, I don't have any idea what they're setting on.
We haven't set them yet. The cash reserves are a part of a formula. Last week, last week, last year, we took them up to 33%, which is the maximum allowed by law. We did that by taking $200,000 from Pilt and putting it into the law enforcement budget, and that took that reserve to 33%. As you spend your money during the year, you are not supposed to use that reserve.
I understand how it works. I just wondered if they're intact for, for, you got a figure for this coming fiscal year?
That reserve is from July 1st until the taxes come in in November.
I understand what that is.
And that reserve would have started at, what, 300, no, I forget what that was set at. But as far as, if it's intact at this point, it should be, because we've just really barely started this five-month period.
I understand that. That's why I wanted, is that cap available for the reserve in the safety of?
It's, it's not on, I don't see the cash reserve on this, but there are, basically our cash carryover until the budget's filed.
And, and yes, I understand how that works. I just wanted, you know, sometimes if that cash reserve isn't allocated enough.
And I don't know what they've allocated for cash reserves for this fiscal year.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
It's really, it was at.
Kind of answered my question. Thank you, Brenda.
It was at 33%, which is the maximum allowed by law last year, 388, 653. This year it's sitting at 28,658, and that is not set by the commission. That is what hasn't been used by that department. So at this point, we are going to have to look at somehow coming up with some more mills to get that reserve up above 3%.
That's what I was wondering.
Is that somewhere on these sheets?
Yeah. It should be on your second sheet. You see the bottom there where it says ending cash? If you go straight across, you'll see that.
Wouldn't that be your cash balance?
That's your reserve.
28,000 on a $1 million budget?
Right. We haven't set that. That's what you have left to get through November. So I mean, we're going to have to do some serious work, because I don't think that's enough.
Answered my question.
But again, Tim, so that you don't misunderstand, those cash reserves are at 388, we're at 388, 853. So those were set as high as we possibly could last year.
At the 33%. I understand that.
Yeah, good. So, any other questions?
I know I'm going to get asked this question.
Okay.
What about salaries?
Salaries, thank you. I forgot to bring that up. We discussed it at 1:45. The county compensation board voted to give a 45 cent per hour raise to the elected officials. They also asked that if there's money available, that the elected officials would have $64 of the health insurance increase from April paid. The commission has always practiced that what the county compensation board voted on for elected officials would be then given to the rest of the employees. I see absolutely no excuse or reason not to continue that practice. The compensation board is made up of elected officials and citizens at large, and we are the ones that will decide on the raises portion for employees, and if we can extend that $64 to employees or portion thereof. We probably won't get to that for a little bit, guessing maybe a week, maybe two. But we have actually started looking at where that will come from, and it does look a bit.
Since right now it looks like 45 cents an hour and $64 of the insurance cost, possible?
It looks like 45 cents an hour and maybe something towards that 64. I don't know that we can do a full 64.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll have to kind of play that by the numbers. Julie, we're just kind of picking up from where the history of this morning left off, so if you have any questions, this is a good time to get an answer. This, this was made earlier too. If you or any of you guys want to work with any of us on the budget, we can talk to you at any time about that, maybe if you want to, if you want, if you're happy with what you submitted, then I don't see any reason that those will change at this point. I do ask that you not spend too much time, you know, with the nitty-gritty with Debbie. Debbie's got payroll this week. She had HR interviews last week, and then she's also doing the budget. So any of us commissioners can help anybody with their budgets at this point. Okay, all right. Scott?
I just want to make a clarification for those of you that may not understand this too. It's been brought up to me several times. When I submit my budget request, I am, I have MOUs and stuff in my regular budget requests that I have to take in to consideration. Those MOUs are through MDT, BLM, certain other contractors. Multiple times people see these outside revenues, and they might fluctuate, and they vary and stuff, and they wonder, okay, where's all this revenue coming in, coming and stuff? Those are categorized as, you know, specific, to be determined. Those are not taxpayer funds directly from this county, but they are set through the state and beyond, and certain things like that. They designate us an X amount to spend each year or over a period of time. So when you're, if you study like the weed departments especially, you'll see certain things, and, and in there, there is that section, and so like, it was noted to me, I had a big increase from last year to this year. That's probably because a certain entity like the BLM drastically increased the amount that I can spend through that MOU. But that, that is through their funds, not through county funds. And so I think if that clarifies any questions or, you know, concerns that have been raised through the commission there in public.
And I think what Scott's illustrating is that a lot of the county budget, county operations are funded by things other than property taxes. So thank you for that. Cheryl?
Scott, I, I understood almost all of your acronyms. I don't know what MLU is.
MOU?
Oh, MOU, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just a, it's an agreement. It's a type of agreement. It's a, do you even know what MOU is?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, thank you. It's, it's, it's just an understanding, basically. It's just an agreement, a contract between the department and the entity, or the county and the entity.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Brenda?
So from what you just said about the cap, you could be divorced, but from what you just said about the cash reserves, you say the ending cash is our cash reserves? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, if you look at, yeah, if you look at that total expenditures, just up like four lines, it's 1,505,749. What you want for your ending cash there is about 33% of that number. What you have with the 28,000 is just 3% of that number.
Isn't that your ending cash balance?
That's, that's what it is. Well, no, it's, it's actually your reserve. What you do, Brenda, you take the total revenue up at the top, you support, or excuse me, subtract total expenditures, you get that number that's in parentheses there, the 359,995. Then you add that to the 388, 653. Your answer there to all that math should be 33%, give or take. Yours is sitting at, at just the three.
It would be after this budget, not right now, it's not. Correct?
Yeah, yes. If, if this budget were to go through as is, yes, that would be all that you have. And that is based on the spending of the last year and projected revenues and spending for the next year.
Because my projected cash reserves, which would be, is what you're saying that is, for, for this year, it was set last year was 317,944.
Actually, that was a, there was amended budget, and I'm not sure when that was done. But that actually is the second column. You see fiscal year 13, there's two columns. One says actual, that one is at the 388, 653. And that's the one that you carry over as part of your formula for this year. You can see how it kind of jumps there? If you want to come sit here at the table, I'd be happy to show it to you.
Well, I, I see, I see the ending cash balance of 317,949 for fiscal year 13.
That, that was the first guesstimate of the budget. You have to look at the actual.
Okay, and I see the 388.
Okay. So we've got a little bit of work to do on that.
So about 30%?
Right. Yeah. Now, unlike other years where we would look at what you wanted and how many mills to fill in, and then figured out the cash reserves, what we're doing this year is we're looking at what the parameters are, how you fit within that, and the last piece is the cash reserves. So the cash reserves is part of the mathematical equation, and in this case, we've, we're going to have to look at where we can find about $300,000. So.
Quick question, is, would that, just if you have been looking at these numbers and I don't have the sheet, how many mills would that be for 300? That's my guess. That's my guess.
Twenty-four, roughly, guesstimate. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll easily be able to infuse the hundred and forty and then from there we'll have to work together and figure out, uh, how to address that. And if you're free tomorrow, Brenda, I'd be happy to work with you at any time.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna be in, I'll be in tomorrow, yeah.
Um, I don't think this is insurmountable, um, myself. I think there's, um, I think we can figure out a way to get that out. Trudy?
Jared, question. Um, once you reinstate the hundred and forty thousand, you're still looking at the three hundred thousand, or are you gonna be able to take that over there and pass?
Two things. We're not gonna reinstate the hundred and forty. Um, we are, but I wanna make sure that there's no, no misunderstanding. That hundred and forty was never taken away, so there is no reinstating. That hundred and forty was part of a cash, uh, cash balance. And when the two departments were separated, that hundred and forty went with the other department. So, yes, with taking that hundred and forty and adding it in two, uh, we will actually subtract three hundred thousand minus one forty, and that'll be the difference we have to make up.
Okay.
Yeah.
One more question?
Yes.
Um, so you are, the public safety department that you split off from the detention center did not need the one forty that it was-
Right.
So therefore that money is going back into the law.
That's what it is now.
So, is there any monies being set, applied to the public safety department now?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Uh, nineteen point three-nine mills, which is an increase from the number of mills last year. There's also an intergovernmental, there's a, uh, inter-local agreement, there's a variety of grants, uh, there's charges for services, there's an awful lot. And you, I have it on your list, I'd be happy to, to show you what that detail is-
Okay.
-after the meeting today, but, um, so Ellen, there's special assessments too. So there's an awful lot that goes in, but there is starting before anything else, nineteen point three-nine mills. And, um, that was also, there was a lot more mills last year when it was, or the year before when it was public safety, detention, and search and rescue. But when we divided all of those apart, those mills had to be divided also in those different departments. So that's why the mills went down.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, there's, there's quite a bit that goes in just to start. And we couldn't start with dividing out the detention center budget without giving some money to let them get started. And, and as you remember, the last two years, we almost lost the detention center. But it is up and going, in fact, it's, it is doing spectacularly well, Brenda, I think you should be commended. The reserves for the detention center right now are sitting at, upwards of forty-three percent. So there's some extra money there, uh, that we can work with. So, you bet. Another one that we're gonna have to look at, Brenda, is search and rescue. That's, um, I think it's at four percent right now. So that'll have to be addressed, um, but it's a whole lot smaller budget, so that should be easier to work with. So, any other questions? Alright.
I got a question.
Scott?
It's always kind of been an interesting one for me, you know, uh, on your outside revenues. How are we to deal with that, you know, are, are, is that reported directly into our revenues? Say like I do weed inspections and, and, you know, other things where I get cash in right at the end of the fiscal year. Are we gonna change anything as to how we report that and the carryover of that funding to our budgets? Or is it just supposed to be within my goal to manage that and find a place to keep that? Or how, is, is anything gonna change that way or, or like the reporting and stuff for those weeds that may come in at the end of the fiscal year?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that amount would come through the clerk and reporter's office and then go through the recording process and then go into Scott's budget, right? I mean, even if Scott brings it into the clerk recorder?
That would be my guess.
I don't see that changing.
Don't see nothing changing.
No. Yeah, the basics of what we're doing, we'll be changing, it's just figuring out the numbers. Are actually, um, switching to a little bit more of a method so that you guys have a better idea where you stand. And we don't get into, um, as much of an argument every year over the budget. To have something where everybody knows what their parameters are is just gonna make everybody's life a whole lot easier and I think is going to reduce spending and increase, um, being frugal. Any other questions?
One last question, I'm here, Tim Ravidoff. What's the, uh, last year's actual budget of the search and rescue?
Last year's, uh, revenue was nineteen one eighty-two. Last year's expenditures were eighteen oh eighty-four.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
So from, from my understanding, the expenditure account of the personnel does not include that possible increase?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
No, not for anybody. And if that goes through, Brenda, we are not looking at asking department heads to wrap it into their budgets. We will pull that, um, probably from PILT and then have you wrap it in next year. In the past, um, it's been done any number of ways. PILT funded, uh, increases in two thousand eight, that should've been paid back, it wasn't. And then in, and this was before this commission. And then in, in other years past, any increase was, department heads were asked to wrap it in. Well, that's, that's easy for a department of one or two, it's really hard for a department of, how many do you have, Brenda? Twenty-three-ish?
Yep.
Yeah, so it became one of those things where just plain and simple wasn't fair to put that kind of pressure on one department. So that's how things changed that way. So. Any other questions? And what we're following this year is not reinventing any kind of wheel. These are all practices that have been done by other counties. We're just accepting best practices from other counties, adopting our practices to fit their practices and following state guidelines, um, in how to do this. So those are really the only changes, um, but it should make things a lot easier for everybody. So, last chance for questions. Alright, we've already had public comment, um, I will call for public comment, just in case. Okay, seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Any questions?
I just wanna change in the chat this way.
Oh, I know, I, I know, I, no, you're, you're right, that was one of those I didn't see, Brian, it was afternoon. I understand.
Detention and sheriff and all?
Yeah. I switched on my pages, Trudy, because it made more sense to me, so I'm not sure where to find it in Debbie's. Okay, what you're asking about is what are these? Um, and you don't want to trouble it yet, get out.
Just for public safety or revenues for the general, general?
Just for public safety, yeah. And these, this is the, um, budget that's sent out. Two seventy, um, this is just the memorandum. So, this is the revenue page. And, um, see licenses, licenses and, um, Debbie knows the numbers, this, um- Department of Justice, brand, probably governmental.
So I'm at here, but it doesn't appear here.
Right, that's actually, this whole page condensed to the five lines.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're not gonna see as much detail.
Okay.
But to add that twenty-six to, um-
Let's see.
Right.
So, I think a hundred thousand, five hundred fifty.
Nine dollars.
Yes, yeah, and that would be grants, um, inter-local, uh, which would be the, uh- See, inter-local, that would be probably including the- Contract that the sheriff's office has for the city, which is held in inter-local. So that's about seventeen point seven thousand a month that they pay to the county for, uh, police services from the sheriff's department, city. There's some, uh, the department of justice, probably, that kind of, uh, inter-local because it's government-to-government. Sheriff's fees, uh, charging for concealed weapons, those things would be under licenses and permits. Boarding prisoners is a zero here, that's not the detention center. Right, permits, twenty-four-seven, that would be under services probably.
So public safety is basically the law. Exactly, then you're just being, um, search and rescue, and then detention. And now they're all separate entities?
Exactly, all still under the sheriff.
Right, but that's under their own budget.
Exactly, yeah. And that's just so that at a glance, you can kinda see where everything's at. So that if there's a problem, you can address it and move. And guys, we did that just because we didn't know what was gonna happen with the detention center. Okay, you can leave it way.
Great.
Thank you very much, you bet.
I don't know- I don't know where they're coming from. No, it, it just that on the, they're, the sheriff's department, their deputies were talking about how bad the road was and through there.
I think they were talking about, the coffee was, they're just a cut-off, I don't think it's a county road. If it's possible, it could be, then tax him with three. Yeah, I, I heard something about one, a road where they're-
Yeah, yeah, but they were saying that the road was so bad and it's like, okay, yeah, so it was a heavy storm on the house today. I just didn't hear any of it, where, where in the county that was.
Hey Brenda, I will be at a conference Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week. If you do wanna get together tomorrow-
What time's Woodward?
Anytime, um, I have a family at five-thirty, so, any time, early morning?
Early morning.
How early?
I come at seven, so.
I can hit seven?
I don't know.
Okay.
So I, where was she?
Eight, okay. And I wanna just meet with the commissioners in their room downstairs?
Yep.
Okay, great, or do you want me to come to your office?
It don't, it doesn't matter, either way. If you wanna come over, you can come over and then, one, two, if we's there, you can go through.
Perfect, and if you get a call, then at least you're at your desk.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see you at your office at eight.
Okay.
Okay. Brenda, I think this is doable.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so, I, I mean, this-
It's shocking that her friends, yeah. No, you know, no, I think we can answer all our questions here.
It doesn't need to be, that's the thing.
What was eventually set last year?
Right. Totally separated out, you can see just-
My cash reserves and my total budget.
Get attention, send it.
Oh, okay.
Curry's coffee.
Yeah, that's right.
We'd have to, Curry's have coffee, that's-
Well, well, with their meals, they don't, I don't think they have coffee otherwise. They just with their meals.
Do, do like your pilot, that was- That was, that was a neat program to be, like, the Capitol Hill. The inmates in their pink underwear and-
Oh, I, I don't laugh, or, yeah.
Soldiers in the fields sleeping in tents, so come the, so come the refugees.
Well-
I, I, we'll bring the whole work, considering the weight right now. Hundred eighteen degrees in the shade.
Yeah, presenting, it would be-
I went over to the hospital, I think, and I was asleep and got a copy of their budget. Right there. All I can say is it, it raises more questions than it answers. So there's notice downstairs that Winston's six thirty, you know, the hospital toward the third one.
Oh, okay.
And on their agenda is the finances. Well, I, uh...
Yeah, well, that cash.
Thirty-three percent of your entire budget. When's that meeting?
Winston's at six thirty.
This is coming tomorrow, or day after tomorrow.
Day after tomorrow.
That's on...
Where's it at, at the hospital, upstairs or?
I don't know where it is, over there, it's set.
Oh, right.
They're not gonna be at this minute because I, I didn't have coffee in my bag.
Ever since you brought that... So, I think it's, it's gonna have to sort around.
That one was put back, didn't it?
Run that hundred and forty thousand there, did come back to you, did?
No, it's, it's still in there. It shows right on these sheets.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. But it doesn't mean it's not removable later.
It's still floating. This is, um, mine, I used to go to this mega conference. I'm not gonna sign it, so, uh, it's in my, see, they never thought anything about it, never. They were a letter come in July, I forgot all about it. And that one meeting that, uh, lady was here, and they said something about, oh, well, they come for some dinner, and he says, boy, I was here to make a conference. And I kind of, I was like, if I called in there, oh, well, I saw her, she put it forward. And so I might have called, and they sent this stuff, and I was looking to it too, but otherwise, I don't know, maybe, never known about it. At the end of this month, it's four days, it's, maybe it's, I think it's much of a bull, maybe the stuff they'll have in there. But if I don't, look at me and that.
Yep. For, Brenda, in detention center, those prisoners are awful hard on equipment, right there?
Yeah, first hill? This, that's, I think, two hills, actually thirteen here.
Yeah, but still.
Yeah.
You don't have...
Now, I'm seeing those valves and stuff. They put them under the water softer now, so that's, hopefully, they'll take care of some of that stuff there.
Oh, whose hand is that in, my?
Of course, it's Mike. I see, I heard that, it was to a trip.
For cancer, they're not listening.
Yeah, to go to, uh... Some training.
My symbol, for training. This letter.
But I, I wonder if that kid that works there, that's his name, because I've always heard him, this is Mike Meyer.